Good evening. If everybody could take their seats, we can get started. Thank you. First, I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. I apologize for the fact that you have to be here. The reason why you're here, as you all know, is a very dire situation with the St. Joe's Pension, of which you are all impacted by that, and I apologize for that. Everybody up here is interested in trying to do the best thing that we can to find out what happened, why it happened, and protect your interests and this plan as much as we possibly can. Before I begin with my initial comments, I'm going to introduce everybody who's up at the table. We have Arlene Violet and Robert Sendville. Arlene and Robert are working together. Many of you have met them already. They had a meeting earlier this week, or last week, on Monday. Next to Arlene is Jack Calacy, who is with UNAP, United Nurses and Allied Professionals. Next to me is Max Wistau and Benjamin Ledsum. They have been identified at this point by myself and the court. We've asked them to assist in identifying claims, who potentially did, whether or not there was wrongdoing, and whether or not it is worth the pursuit to identify what that wrongdoing could result in terms of money back into the plan. And I'll speak to that a little bit later on in my discussion. And then there's my assistant, whom many of you have spoke to or communicated with, my paralegal Julie Zaccanini. Before we begin, I want to just make a couple of general statements. One, it's my hope that we can answer as many questions as you have tonight. That's the purpose of being here, is to give you a status on what's going on, to answer some of your questions. Unfortunately, the truth is, is that there may be many questions that you ask that we do not have answers to right now. There's a lot of information that everybody up here is trying to absorb and get our hands around. We are just about two months into this process, and we unfortunately may not have an answer. That is, when nobody's trying to be evasive, it just is, quite frankly, that we do not have enough information to give you a valid answer to your question. When we do, we will answer those questions, but tonight we may not have those responses. Also, a question that's been asked by many, which is somewhat of a difficult question to answer, but I'm going to try to do it, is who exactly am I in terms of my role here and who do I represent? While it's true I am a lawyer in my capacity here, I am not acting as a lawyer. I am an unbiased, impartial, court-appointed fiduciary. My job is to protect and preserve the assets of the plan for the benefit of the plan participants as best as I can. So I do not represent, quote-unquote, "represent" anybody. I do not represent any of the parties that were involved with St. Joseph's, or this plan, or the transactions that resulted in either Prospect purchasing St. Joseph's or Charter Care. I'm a court-appointed fiduciary, impartial, unbiased, and I actually have not represented anybody in connection with those actions prior to my appointment. People like Arlene and Robert are independent attorneys. Jack's brother Chris, who is counsel to UNAP, independent attorney. Max is an independent attorney who I've retained to assist me. But we, I, I should say "I," do not represent you in terms of who will represent you. I will get into that, or who could represent you. We will get into that. But for purposes of this, I am here to protect the plan and how that plan will be dealt with for your benefit as plan participants in the best way that I can. Regarding this process, this is a receivership proceeding. It's in front of the Rhode Island Superior Court. Judge Brian Stern is the presiding judge over this proceeding. He is the one who has appointed me at the request of St. Joseph's Health Services, Inc. And this is a transparent process. What I mean by that is, you have not had some transparency with regard to this plan for a very, very long time. This process is such where whatever happens, you will know about not only when it happens, but in advance of when it happens. Everything that I'm doing is reported to the court regularly. I will provide updates. You're free to use the email address that I've set up. You're free to use the phone numbers that have been set up to ask questions. And I will provide as many answers as I possibly can to those questions and to those responses. I'll do it as timely as I can as well. But it is transparent. Everything that I do, if there is a hearing, if there's a meeting such as this one, if there's information, it will be provided to you via mail, and it will be posted to the website. So with that, if you do receive notice of something or a meeting, you hear about a meeting happening, and you did not receive a mailing from me, or it's not posted to my website, while it is something that is certainly happening and may be related to this matter, it is not happening in conjunction or in coordination with me or with the court. For example, Arlene's meeting last Monday was a meeting that Arlene was having, which clearly implicates this case and has an impact on what happens in this case. Arlene, as a private attorney, was doing that with regard to the group that Arlene was targeting to represent, and that was done independent of the court and the receiver. Okay? It was something that is appropriate to be done, but many did call and inquire as to why the receiver did not provide notice, did not provide information about that meeting. The reason is, is that the information I provide is only related to what I am doing, what the court is doing with regard to this matter. Anything that's happening by any private attorneys or other groups that is not coordinated through me, I will not be providing notice of. There were also some questions. What I'm trying to do, by the way, is I'm trying to answer as many of the questions that were raised in emails and phone calls as I can, hopefully to minimize the number of questions that you have when I open it up for those questions. And that's what my attempt right now is to do. There were some questions as to why the hearing on September 8th that occurred was an emergency. I will tell you that in, from a technical standpoint, legally speaking, an emergency, and in that case in particular, is based purely on the timeframe in which notice goes out to parties. If the statute requires 10 days' notice, and we're doing it in two or three days, then we call it an emergency hearing because we can't give the statutory notice. So it wasn't emergency in the sense that there was something emergent that was happening that needed to be dealt with. It was merely a basis of the notice that we provided was shorter than what normally needs to be provided. That may happen from time to time. If it is an emergency, a true emergency, you'll get notice of it, and it'll explain in that pleading. Otherwise, if it's called emergency, you can assume that it was just to address notice issues. In addition to that, everybody who has received notice from me, if you received something in the mail from me recently, then that means that your name was included on a list that was provided to me by the Plan Benefit Administrator. If you are uncertain as to whether you are covered by this plan, that you are a participant of this plan, or if you want specific information regarding your status, benefits, things of that nature, you should contact the Plan Benefits Administrator to get that information. If you think that you should not be on that list, contact the Plan Benefits Administrator and speak to them, and they can explain to you why you were included on the list for With regard to benefits, that's something that I know everybody here wants to know about. As you know, on September 8th, at that hearing, I asked the judge to put off what St. Joe's Health Services had asked would be the date in which there was a discussion on a reduction of benefits. So St. Joe's Health Services asked to have a 40% cut implemented and to have that heard on October 11th, and I asked the judge to push that off, which the judge agreed to do until at least after the first of the year. I think the date that the judge specifically spoke about was February 1st. Until then, and until you hear something from me or the court to the contrary, your benefits, if you're currently receiving, will maintain a status quo status. You'll continue to receive your checks as scheduled in the amounts that you're typically accustomed to receiving. If you filed an application to receive benefits, and that application was filed either before my appointment but had not been processed, or after my appointment, your application has been preserved, the date in which you presented it has been preserved. The Benefits Administrator will advise you if there was a defect in the application, if you forgot to add information or things like that, but the applications will not be processed. The court has put a postponement on the processing of those applications at my request, and I requested that because as I'm making an assessment as to what can happen, what should happen with your benefits, I need the status of those payments and those applications to remain constant. If applications are continually processed, that will change the math and the numbers that I'm dealing with in terms of trying to understand what the best way to deal with the benefits that you're receiving and what cuts may have to happen. So that's why that has happened. I also want to address the 40% request that St. Joseph's Health Services has requested. Keep in mind, that is a request by St. Joe's Health Services. That's what they put in their petition, and that's what they told the court they felt was the most equitable way to deal with the pension and the benefits that you are receiving. That 40% reduction request made by St. Joseph's Health Services has not been adopted by me. It has not been endorsed by me. It has not been recommended by me. It is one of many options that I am evaluating right now. I can't, as I sit here today, I cannot tell you what my recommendation will be as we get closer to January 2018, February. I can tell you that I am considering what they've asked, but I'm considering every other option. And quite frankly, there are as many options available as to how to deal with this plan as there are people sitting in this room. And I'm going to do my best job to find what I believe is the most equitable way to deal with it. It may be an initial with something later to happen, but whatever I recommend, you can rest assured that I've gone through as much analysis as I possibly can, and in addition that I've invited people that are sitting up at this table that are here representing your interests, and that will later be designated to represent your interests, or that you bring in to represent your interests with what I'm doing, so that everybody has a voice at the table, and everybody can voice their concern, their pleasure, or their displeasure with what's being recommended. I'll address that quickly. On the October 11th, we are going to be having a hearing. At that hearing, one of the things I'm going to be asking is that the court identify groups. Right now, as we stand here today, Arlene Violet has identified a certain group of people that she's representing. UNAP certainly has union members that it has representation of, and there's a number of you that fall outside of those two areas. It's important for the court, it's important for this process, I think, that each group that has a differing interest from the next be established, and I'm going to ask the court to establish that. I'll identify what I think those groups should be. There may be differing opinions on whether or not the way I break it down is the most appropriate way. And I'm also going to be asking the court to designate, identify attorneys who will stand in the place for each group. If that happens, when that happens, you can opt in to that process, meaning if, for example, it won't be me, but if I was designated as an attorney, you can say, "I want to be in the group that Steve Del Cesto was representing, and I want Steve Del Cesto to be my voice in this process." You could do that, or you could say, "I would fall into that group, but I don't want that attorney. I want to hire my own private attorney." At that time, you can make that assessment if you want to. It's my hope, and I think from a cost standpoint, it would benefit everybody. The more that are in a group, the more the costs will be spread out among many as opposed to one. So while it may be for some of you cost prohibitive to hire an individual attorney to protect your rights, having the court designate counsel to a certain group of individuals will allow that cost to be deferred over, or to be spread out over many. There is a question, or there has been a question regarding termination of the plan versus a wind-down of the plan. Again, similar to the 40% cut that St. Joe's Health Services recommended. St. Joe's Health Services recommended that there be a long-term wind-down of the plan. What I believe, although I don't know because I don't represent St. Joe's, and I can't get into the minds of the attorneys that filed the petition, what I believe they meant by that is they wanted a receiver to take control of these assets and to manage these assets in the same way that the plan was being managed prior to, but with the idea of protecting it for the benefit of everybody over several decades of time. That would be a long-term wind-down. Another option would be termination of the plan, which is to just close the plan down, terminate it as of today, liquidate the investments, and do a distribution of the funds that are currently in the plan under a scheme that either the plan sets forth or the law requires. All of those, those two and others are options. Nothing has happened yet. There has been no decision made as to whether or not this plan will be terminated, or be some long-term wind-down, or something else. As we stand here right now, the plan is not terminated, and we have not gotten into a long-term wind-down status. We're just trying to get our hands around what's going on at this point. I'm going to now just quickly address claims. And what I mean by that when I talk about claims that the plan has, claims that you may have. It's very difficult right now to identify what claims are out there and who actually holds the right to those claims. And what I mean by claims is I mean holding those people or groups responsible for what happened and pursuing, if there is a group that's identified as being responsible for what happened. As I've stated earlier, the court and I have asked Max Wistau and his office to assist in identifying who may have done something wrong, if anybody, what they did wrong, and if we can collect funds from those parties which can go into the plan and benefit you. We are in the process of evaluating that. Max has not, at this point, and his office have not been formally engaged. I am evaluating the terms of that. We are discussing that. While we're doing that, we are looking at the prudence of pursuing these claims, but it's too early right now to identify what claims there are, who they could be against, and more importantly, whether or not it's going to result in money into the plan. Just because we identify a claim and a person or group doesn't mean that it will be prudent to pursue that, because if it's not going to result in money that goes into the plan which can benefit you, it's not worth it to pursue it in this case. There may also be claims that we identify that I cannot bring as receiver, but that you may be able to bring as participants. That will be for independent counsel that have been identified to make that determination once those claims, if there are any, are identified. I believe that is the summary of my introduction of the comments that I wanted to make, and I think that covers a lot of what many of you had asked and were concerned about and were wondering the answer to. Before I open up the room to questions, I'd ask if Arlene, or Jack, or Max want to say anything, and then I'll open it up to questions from anybody.
Thank you, Steve. My name is Jack Calacy, and I work for the union. I'm very proud to be working with a committee composed of many of you to bring public awareness to this issue and to build public support for our issue. Now, our public issue is very simple. A promise was made. A promise was made for loyal service that you would get your pension. The promise was not that you would get 30% of your pension. The promise was not that you would get 40% of the pension. The promise was that you provide loyal service and you get your pension. Now, raise your hand when you were working if you provided 40% service. How many of you came to work 80% of the time, or did half of a job? So our public position has to be, you earned it, a promise was made, and we're going to hold the people who are responsible, we're going to hold their feet to the fire to make them keep their promise. Now, there are just two very simple points that I want to make here. First, it's up to us to bring the public pressure to bear and to be everywhere, to be leafleting, to be talking, to be protesting. It's up to us to generate the public pressure. There are very fine attorneys working on this. They will tell you, though, that they can do their job better if we do our job by going out in the community and telling our story. So the first thing is, it's our job, and it's my job to work with you to organize that public support. The second point I want to make, we're all in this together, all of us. It doesn't matter if you were in the union. It doesn't matter if you are in the union. It only matters if you're affected. And I'm just going to tell you something. I'm looking out across the audience, and I've worked for this union for 35 years, and I see nursing vice presidents and human resource people, and vice presidents who I argued with and pushed and shoved with for all those years, and they're all welcome, and they're all in this. We're all in this together, all of us. I can't emphasize that enough. We're all together. If you want to get your pension at 100%, then we need you to help. Now, we've organized a terrific committee of volunteers already, and they're doing great work. Nobody's asked anybody on that committee, "Are you in the union? Were you in the union? Were you in management?" The only question is, if you want to help, please help. At the end of this meeting, I'll be out in the lobby with a sign-up sheet, and if you want to serve on this committee, and if you can help us, then all we're going to ask you is for your name and your contact information, and welcome you to being involved. Now, let me just give you a brief idea of what we're doing. Already, we have leafletting the Aldrich Mansion where the bishop was saying Mass for the church's biggest donors. You probably saw in the journal recently, two terrific women, Lyn Brooke Blaze, who's the president of our union, and Marilyn Haran, who's a distinguished nursing educator, a beloved nurse educator I have come to know. Her name was on it as well. So we need to... We're all working together to get letters to the editor, to get commentary pieces, to bring public awareness. We are organizing, and we will be busing hundreds of people to hold a press conference and picket the court 8:30 in the morning on October 11th. We'll bus people from our office. We've hired three buses. If we have more people, we will hire 50 buses, however many buses we need. We will bus people from our union office on Branch Avenue to the courthouse at 8:30 to picket, and then we'll get on the bus, and we'll go up to the diocese's office, and we'll picket there. That will be the kickoff of our public campaign. For those who are already signed up, it'd be a good idea to carpool to our office. If you haven't signed up and you want to come, and you want to ride the bus, just see me outside and sign up for that. We need to be everywhere. We need to be leafleting Water Fire, the Situate Arts Festival, any place people are, we need to be. Any place the bishop is, we need to be. And as this issue develops, if we need to go elsewhere, to Charter Care, to anybody else who has engaged in any kind of malfeasance here, we will go there too. Most important thing, everybody together. Now, I'm not a lawyer. I leave the legal issues to the lawyers. There may, down the road, be some differences between different groups and classes, and that will go its own course and run its own course. But now, now, and until that point, we all need to work to make sure there's the biggest amount of money in that pot. And we can't be looking at each other as, "Who's going to get more than me?" We have to look at each other as friends and colleagues working together to do the best we can. Now, I'm going to tell you a little story before I sit down about this. About 30 years ago, I was a young union rep, and I went over to the Department of Health representing a nurse. And there was a woman who was the head of the board nurse licensure named Marilyn Haran, and she threw me out. Now, I've been mad about that for 35 years. But we met recently at our union office for a meeting, and I would just tell you, I think the world of her. She's my good friend now. She's doing great work. We settled our differences. We got a great fight that we're working on together. I can't say enough positive things, and that's what all of us have to do. We have to walk this walk together. So it makes no difference, you're in the union, you're not in the union, you're retired, you're not retired. If you want to help, if you want to sign up on our steering committee, I'll be outside, you're welcome. And if you can help leafleting and those activities, if you want to get on a bus and picket on the 11th, see me outside. And thank you all very much.
I would just like to underscore what Jack said. We are all in this together, and it is critically important that if you can show up for any of the types of job actions, as it were, that you all work together. Rob Sendville, my colleague, who's co-counsel with me, we hate the fact that we have to meet you under these circumstances. You've been dealt an injustice, every single one of you, every one of you. And I know there's a brotherhood here from St. Joe's in Fatima, but there's a special sisterhood here, a special sisterhood. And we've got to hang together to put as much pressure as possible, shame if possible, on the malfeasors, the miscreants, whether they're in the church or outside the church. Now, I for one am very pleased that the particular receiver is the one that is handling this particular matter. He's fair, he's open, and he's Don Smart. And one of the smartest things he did was to speak with Max Wistau about litigating potentially, or looking at causes of action where the bad guys will have to pony up money to put it back into the pension. Now, that is a very difficult thing to do. Mr. Wistau does not have an easy job. It's a hard job, but if anybody can do it, he can do it. And what I want to say to you is, my fervent prayer is that he would get 100% recoupment back into this pension of yours, so that everybody would be made whole. But in the event that not everyone is made whole, the reason why attorneys like Rob Sendville and I do pro bono work, which means instead of $350 an hour, our rate is zero, we do it for free, is that we have a responsibility, all lawyers do, but we take pro bono very seriously. And the whole concept there is to represent people who cannot afford attorneys and who will suffer undue hardship if their rights are not vindicated. And as we looked at this picture while recognizing the injustice to all, as pro bono lawyers, we have to look at disparate impact. I'll give you an example. Today, a 99-year-old nurse, LPN, worked 50 years there, gets $209 St. Joseph's pension. 99 years old. You know, of course, Social Security is predicated on what you earned back in those days. You know, of course, social security is predicated on what you earned back in those days. So, her social security check is de minimis. That pension is the difference between her being slightly above poverty or below the poverty line. So, what are we going to do? Ask the 99-year-old to go back to work, get a second job? We're going to ask her to sign up for welfare? By the time UHIP is working and cleans up its backlog, she'll be dead. So, our job then is to take a look at all the people to whom an injustice has been dealt and to say, "Who are those most hurt?" So, Robert Sendl and I are representing those people who are fully retired, collecting their social security check, who because of age and disability cannot possibly be employed anyplace else, and they're just unavailable to the workplace and they are stuck. They are unable to supplement their trust that's been broken now. There's no way for them to get unstuck because of that age and disability. So, hopefully, we never will have to come up with that group. I hope there will be enough money to rectify this situation for everyone. But as the receiver mentioned, there have to be various groups because some people are situated differently. Some people are employed, they're young, they have a union to work for them, they have health care, they have everything in the sense of the ability to negotiate new rates of pay, et cetera. And what I've seen from people in the group Rob and I are representing, the highest anybody ever got paid was $11 an hour as a nurse. So, you could imagine then that they are on the cusp of being able to slip below in their last years into a terrible existence where we can maintain the status quo. So, respectfully, I submit to you that I am heartbroken this has happened to you. But our job, we have to represent people who have no other place to go, and we do so on the basis of undue hardship if it comes to that. You don't need at this point to elect an in or out with Rob and me. As the receiver mentioned, he will be presenting to the court on October 11th what he thinks the categories ought to be, and the court may or may not agree with that. But if the court does agree with that, at that point, you will be asked to evaluate whether you would opt in or opt out for Rob and I to represent you pro bono. So, in closing, let me say that for now, our group is wholly retired, collecting social security, so you can't bump it up anymore, disabled, and because of age or disability, this would be an undue hardship on you because you can't be employed and you would slip below the poverty line or the near poverty line. This is the last thing. Whatever that cut may or may not be, if we don't get all this money back into the pot, whatever it may be, our argument would be that there should be a sliding scale because not all people are created equal in their ability to rebound from this horror. And that would be what we would be arguing if it comes to that. So, I hope we have explained. Rob, do you want anything to add? You all set? Okay. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Arlene. I just want to, I guess, put my own point on everything that Jack and Arlene said. It's my intention, I know it's the court's intention, that everybody who's been affected by what's happening to this pension have a voice on what's going to happen going forward. Right now, as we sit here today, everybody has been harmed. Not one person sitting in this room has not been affected by what's happened to this pension. Right now, we need to focus on identifying who, if anybody, was responsible and who we can hold accountable so that we can get money back into the plan if that's possible. Later down the road, there may be a time where we are talking about who should be getting what cuts, how that should be happening, as Arlene said, whether it should be a sliding scale, whether it should be as St. Joseph's Health Services had suggested, a 40% across the board, or something else. But right now, we need to focus on identifying the who and the how in terms of how do we get that money back in or some of the money back in. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. Everybody up here is walking down that same road. We're all walking together to try to figure that out. Okay? There's no difference among us in that. And later on, we'll be dealing with difficult decisions of what's going to happen, but the first difficult decision is figuring out what happened. Okay? With that, I would invite, unless there are any other comments from anybody up here, I'd invite any of you to ask whatever questions. I will say there's a microphone up here. If you want to come up, if you can't come up, you could either yell or communicate your question to somebody else if you don't think you have a loud enough voice. I'll let you know if I can't hear you. But, ma'am?
It's not working. Is it working? Okay. Hi, I'm not really good at this public speaking stuff, but, and I have a cold, so it's going to be kind of rough. But I have written the questions down with some help from my husband. One of them is, "The diocesan maintains that the pension plan," and I know you had worked on this, "isn't within their purview. Why then is the pension plan, three years after the sale of Prospect, still considered a church plan? Why didn't St. Joseph's managers of the fund pay the PBCG insurance immediately when the church antagonated its responsibilities of the fund of the pension?"
I'm going to let Max... That's a very, very difficult question, and it's one that we are looking into, but I'm going to let Max address that.
I know you had addressed the church thing at the other meeting.
First of all, I'm very glad to be here because seeing you all gives me kind of an incentive, understanding what is at stake here. There's a lot of hurting people, and it's good for a lawyer to see that it's not just some abstraction. Let me try to address as best I can. The whole issue of when is a church plan, a church plan... By the way, let me just say briefly what the consequence of being a church plan is if indeed this is properly a church plan. If it's a church plan, it is not subject to federal regulation ERISA. ERISA plans, there are requirements for annual contributions, annual disclosures, all kinds of protections, including, not the least, insurance by the Pension Benefit Guarantee Corporation, which comes in and takes over failed pensions. If this is in fact a church plan throughout, then it doesn't get the benefit of all of those things. One of the things we are looking at is to see if there's an answer to your question. Is this really a church plan? And it is not such a simple thing. As recently as June 5th, the United States Supreme Court came down with a decision where the circuit courts, the intermediate appeals courts, were in dispute about when is a church plan. A church plan, the US Supreme Court came down with a decision that clarified somewhat the issues, but it's still very much open. So, that is one of the things we're going to be looking at. I hope that answers the question. It's the best I can do.
Well, it's the best you can do right now. But it's convenient that this happened after the June time. So...
From what I was told in the investigation... Everybody can hear you. Do you stay?
Hi, I'm one of the oldies.
But goodies.
From what I... The investigation and the question and the help of my brother, apparently, I understood that was in the '50s that the churches started to establish this pension fund.
This one was 1965.
Oh, whatever. They had, they had, well...
See, I have been looking at this.
They chose the diocesan way to go, not the PBG. Okay. Why? Because they would be under the PBG rules, and the diocesan did not want that. They wanted to be in control, okay? And that's why we're stuck and we can't go to the PBGs. Then they have nothing to do with us now, from what I understand. But what happened to the board of trustees and all of this? Are their pockets clean? What for you, Teddy? Are their pockets... Who and where and when did all of a sudden we got no money? I was sitting in the chair crocheting after I gave my husband his medication and saw on TV, "We got no money." I mean, that's enough to put you into cardiac arrest. I mean, come on.
But you know how to handle that, don't you?
Please?
You know how to handle that?
Unfortunately.
I don't mean to be glib or to make light of it. You asked some very significant questions, and we're looking into it.
I have a couple, actually.
There's no question, as all of the other speakers have said, that you people relied on your employer, you acted in the utmost good faith, and now look where you are. So, I apologize if you think I was making light of it. I wasn't. And we're looking into all of these things. You're right, the church could have elected, could have elected to put this plan into ERISA and gotten the guarantees. They would have had to pay premiums to do it, but more importantly, they also would have been compelled to make annual payments. So, they didn't. And there's a lot of, lot of legal issues that need to be explored, a lot of legal issues.
She's going to ask another question, and then I'll ask my other ones.
Okay.
I guess I would just like clarification because you've been tossing it around. Who is St. Joseph Health Services of Rhode Island, Inc.?
That's also a very good question. St. Joseph's Health Services of Rhode Island, Inc. is the hospital management company that ran St. Joseph's Hospital before the acquisition of that hospital by Prospect in 2014. It right now stands as a shell, a hospital management company without a hospital to manage, and it is my understanding, although I do not have any oversight over this, but it has been communicated to me by their counsel, that they are in efforts to wind down that shell entity. And they have been, and they have been doing, taking those efforts on since the transaction in 2014. So, as of right now, it is a shell entity. It is the same entity that ran the hospital, but it is now a shell winding down its efforts or winding down its affairs.
So, it looks like we do have someone to blame. How did Kilmatin allow that to happen?
I will address that by saying, we are looking at how everybody that we could identify, we're looking to see what their role was involved in that transaction. I'm looking at the history related to this. We're trying to make determination as to what happened, and again, if there's anybody that we can hold accountable.
My next question is, how was Prospect even able to purchase all the favorable, all the good stuff, assets of the hospital, the building, the people, but not inherit the liabilities of the pension, secure the future of our pension, a very pension under their employment? How is it that if I go and buy a house and there's a lien on it or something wrong with it, I have to take responsibility of the good and the bad? But yet, when they came forward to buy the property of the hospital or however you put that, how were they able to do that? Kilmatin allowed that to happen when he, in his own words, said that this was a good thing for the employees, but yet, they only took the good stuff. And then, the other thing is, is the $14 million that went in. From what I understand is that was, and I don't know if I have my figures right, but there was like 53 million that went to the bondholders so that they would be paid off so that they wouldn't have to worry. But the poor nurses and people that worked for St. Joseph's were given 14 million towards their... Where they got that number, nobody seems to know, and we're left without anything, whereas the bondholders, whoever they are, were given anything that they wanted. Their bond, they're left, they're gone, and they don't have to worry about us anymore.
With regard to that purchase, I wasn't involved in that transaction. That is something that I am looking into. I know Max and his team is looking into that transaction. Quite simply, I don't know how that transaction came about, the negotiations or anything. With regard to the numbers, it was, I believe, the entire purchase was $95 million, and it was allocated as $31 million to satisfy the bond debt, $14 million to go into the pension, and then $50 million to go into capital expenditures to improve the facilities. I don't know how that was negotiated at this point.
They just picked it out of the air, probably, right?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. It may be. It may have been Prospect said, "This is our offer, take it or leave it." I don't know. It did go through a conversion process. It had to, under Rhode Island law, it had to go into that conversion process to convert from a not-for-profit to a for-profit hospital. And under that process, there is a review of different aspects done by the Department of Health and the Attorney General. Again, I don't know how the negotiation played out with Prospect and St. Joe's and Charter Care and Roger Williams. I just know what happened, and we're looking into how that entire transaction came about and who, how it was negotiated, and whether or not somebody did in fact drop the ball during that transaction.
The other thing is, is that from what I've read, is this whole pension fund is based on a 6.5 from the bonds and stocks. So, if your investment returns, there's no money, if there's no money coming in, 6.5, as you know, even in the times that we're living in right now where we have higher money coming into everybody, then how did they, whoever would have come up with this plan that was 6.5? You're lucky if you get from a bond like 2% or 3%, and then this, they want us to get 6.5. But with the pension this size and the amount of people that are in it, you're not going to have 6.5 in your stocks because they have to worry about losing those stocks if we have a downfall in the stock market. We've been lucky enough to have a big increase in the last three years, and yet, we're now in the hole somehow. I don't understand that. I mean, like, I know when I went in the hole three years ago, we've come up because we've, you know, made changes in our portfolio, but we invest and go through everything. My husband checks everything, whereas it looks like our pension was just like dangling out there someplace, and somebody said, "Yep, we didn't get 6.5." But, you know, like, nobody's there to run it. So, I'm hoping that this investigation is finding out who was running the show, as you said, and who's going to be responsible.
That is, that's what we're looking at. I will speak generally about that rate of return. Generally, in any pension, there is a identified rate of return which changes periodically. In this case, they had it at, I believe it was actually seven and three quarters. At one point, it was 6.5, seven and three quarters. I don't know as to how, as I sit here today, whether or not that was a prudent number. I have my questions as to whether or not it was a prudent number once 2014 transaction closed, but you're right. It's an average over a 40, 50-year period, but as we sit here today, might have been a little too aggressive for this plan based on what was happening. And that's, again, that's something that we're looking into. I don't have the answer to that as I sit here right now.
And if we had had a downfall in the stock market in the last year, where would we be then? We'd have nothing left. So, obviously, whoever was investing in this was, you know, Charlie Brown, I guess. I don't really know because it doesn't seem like anybody that had any horse sense about, you know, investing was doing anything for us. And I've heard over the...
And I've heard over the time, people talking how we're at fault, the union members, the people that I work with over the years, those that are not in the union, that we were at fault because we took too much money out, we didn't look into it, so we didn't know what was going on with our money. I'm not a financial person. I take care of my own finances, but somebody other than myself should have been taking care of this, and I hope that you find him, and I hope something's done about it.
Just to hit that last point, we are looking into everything, and I will say that I don't think there's anybody that's standing up here right now that thinks that you are at fault for the situation that you're in today. This was not your fault. You were made promises, and those promises weren't kept, and we're trying to figure it out.